Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome to our committee as a whole for January 20th. I'm Mayor Kevin Murdock, I'll be chairing this committee meeting. I want to start by acknowledging that we are holding this meeting on the traditional territories of the Coast and Strait Salish people, specifically the Lee Kwangun speaking people known today as the Esquire, Malt and Songhe's First Nations, and their connections to these lands continue to this day. I also want to point out that these are live cast, streamed on the internet and available later for webcasting in future. We have two items on the agenda. The first item we have is a development variance permit and upland sitting and design application. I'll turn it over to Ms. Jensen, our manager of planning for an overview.
Thank you. This particular home is located at the southwest corner of Beach Drive and Dorset Road, just in the Uplands area. The owner is proposing to update the exterior of the home by expanding the main floor of the home at two corners of the building, both those corners facing Dorset Road, adding a deck and a patio to the rear yard and adding garage doors to the carport that's currently housed underneath the home, also facing Dorset Road. The expansion of approximately .65 square meters at the northeast corner of the home, which would project the main floor over the existing lower level, requires a 1.72 meter variance to the exterior side lot line, taking the corner of the building to 5.9 meters from the exterior side lot line. The proposed changes do update the look of the home through the use of cedar shingle cladding, metal clad wood windows, and a standing seam metal roof. The applicant will also be planting three arbutus and two Gary oak trees in the rear yard to achieve a 46% tree canopy cover. The advisory design panel was generally supportive of the application. They did suggest some changes, the majority which have been included in the revised drawings now in front of you. That includes the addition of a thin window trim and horizontal cedar slats on the deck to accentuate the form of the home. Staff have reviewed the application and consider the proposal to be supportable as it will update the appearance and durability of the home. It substantially complies with the Uplands guidelines and the proposed variance has little to no impact on the boulevard or adjacent neighbors. Staff are seeking council direction.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jensen. Are there any questions of the, is the applicant here? Welcome. I will call you forward if there's any questions for you, but otherwise we'll just, we'll, are there any questions of the committee to staff or the applicant? Seeing that's a very straightforward sort of application. Is there anyone from the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to us on this application at this time? I'm not seeing any, so we'll bring it back to this table. Any discussion? I shall ask for a motion as laid out and then we can have a discussion on the motion. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, I will move that counsel approve the application to undertake alterations to the existing single family dwelling at 2780 Beach Drive as outlined in the January 2nd, 2020 report for ADP 00115, be approved as to upland sitting and design, subject to approval for DVP 00096.
I will second.
We can, we can do the two together if you want, and that notification be given?
And that notification be given of council's consideration of DVP 00096.
There's a seconder?
Second.
Movement seconded, any discussion? Seeing done, I will call the question then, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, and just for those in the audience wondering, this upland sitting and design is a recommendation to council for approval, but the variance has to go up for notification to neighbors, so that'll go with a two-week notification period and come back to the council table for final consideration of that application. So, thank you very much. That's it on that item. And we are moving on to item number two, which I think most of the audience is probably here for, which is the Prospect Heritage Conservation Area, OCP 0004, 00004. And I believe I'll hand this over to Mr. Anderson, our Director of Building and Planning, to do an introduction.
Thank you, your worship, members of council and those in the audience. Before I begin on this, I would just like to note that we have Gord McDonald here from Heritage Works, a consultant who has worked with us on the HCA, I guess through the inception of the working group, and is here tonight for any assistance that we may need regarding questions on this. And of course, just acknowledge the work of Deborah Jensen on this HCA amendment that we have before us as well. So, with that, your worship, I'd just like to give an overview of what's before council, committee, the whole this evening. And I'll begin with that we basically have an amendment to the official community plan before us. It is to bring a new heritage conservation area into Oak Bay, and it's for a specific neighborhood area referred to as the Prospect. As an OCP amendment, just for the benefit of the audience and those, we've have council consideration of actually bylaw readings to the community plan, followed by formal referrals and consultation. That includes to external agencies, but also in the instance of an HCA, we do refer or provide consultation to property owners whose properties are proposed to be on what is referred to as a schedule listing as part of this HCA. So, those are the consultation pieces that then lead us to holding a public hearing respecting the OCP amendment. And following that, council can give consideration of third reading and final adoption of the bylaw. So, that's the process that we have before us with respect to the OCP amendment regarding the HCA. So, an HCA is something that provides for long-term protection for this distinct area of the Prospect neighborhood. It's known to contain special heritage values and special heritage character as well. The HCA itself represents a mechanism really to manage future change within the area and ensures new construction activities are appropriate to the context and also preserves the heritage value of the neighborhood. So, the basic purpose of providing an HCA in this context. Now, I should just note that to step back to arrive at this point, there's been a great deal of work that's done by the community, been done by the community, committee members, staff and consultants to get us to this path. And I'll just refer briefly to the outline in the report regarding the process, and that is that this really was initiated by residents requesting that there be a consideration of a heritage conservation area in the neighborhood back in, late in 2016. The process that unfolded was basically council identifying this as a priority back in 2017, establishing a working group that then proceeded to put together and complete a statement of significance, as well as proposed heritage conservation area guidelines that were presented to council back in February, or sorry, in January of 2019. With that information presented, council then directed that an OCP amendment should be prepared and brought forward for consideration. And we're here today with staff having conducted a process of basically preparing a draft amendment and then working on the guidelines and the components of that amendment with the various committees, the advisory design panel, the advisory planning commission, and of course, our heritage commission to get us to a point where you've got a document before you now. We also, as part of that process, did notify those property owners, or the property owners in the area of the proposed draft schedule listing, so that there was a heads-up, if you will, of what was being proposed in the upcoming amendment. So, with that, sorry, excuse me for a moment. Myself moving along. So, the content for heritage conservation, I'd just like to give an overview of that. And I guess it'll help us to reveal that the conservation area is really, it provides for a process related to issuing heritage alteration permits. And those heritage alteration permits are reviewed and grounded by guidelines that are prepared and they're part of this HCA. So, the HCA itself does provide amendments to the community plan that allow for us to put HCAs or heritage conservation areas in Oak Bay. But what it also does is it introduces the Prospect HCA, which is referred to as HCA1, as a proposed conservation area for the community. And with that specific new HCA, there's a series of components that I just thought I would run through just for the benefit of everybody who is interested in this. So, we introduce the Prospect HCA, and then there's a justification that sets out the special features and characteristics that justify the area as having a designated heritage conservation area. I'll just note that that justification that you see in the actual amendment to the community plan is based on a supporting document, and that is the statement of significance that was prepared and has been updated for this neighborhood area. Objectives are also part of that, that new Prospect HCA, and those objectives basically identify how we would achieve the preservation basically of the distinctive character of the Prospect area. And as I mentioned, there's an application of the HCA that involves a review of heritage alteration permits for activities that occur within the area. The amendment also content contains exemptions where heritage alteration permits are not required. And as I mentioned earlier, there's a schedule of properties that basically provides a listing of properties that warrant additional protection, and they are considered protected properties with their placement on the schedule and amended as part of the community plan. As I also noted, there's a key section of this HCA, and that is a set of guidelines that are used for review of heritage alteration permits. The guidelines in the instance of Prospect are provided for both protected properties on the schedule, and also there's guidelines that apply to non-protected properties that are within this neighborhood area. And finally, the component of the HCA is basically a map that identifies the heritage conservation area in the district and is a schedule to our official community plan. There are some comments I'd just like to make in closing prior to putting forward the consideration for council of the recommendation. And one is, I think there has been some discussion, quite a bit of discussion around any modifications there might be to the process that's associated with implementing the HCA, and it's particularly around how we manage our heritage alteration permits. And what I want to mention off the top here is there are some suggestions on where we might go in the future regarding that process, but what we have before us this evening and for council's consideration of this HCA is the actual amendment to the community plan. We would be looking at any changes or modifications to procedures as a subsequent process to this particular amendment process we're in now. So, we wouldn't be talking about how we would possibly change what we do now. And what we do now for heritage alteration permits, just for the information of the audience, is that we receive an application on these. They're reviewed by Heritage Commission with a recommendation and by staff, and then council considers approval or not of heritage alteration permits. So, that's the basic process that we do have in place in Oak Bay. Another component that there's been some discussion on and some action associated with that is respecting archaeological sites. And just for clarity, archaeological sites are governed by different legislation, the Heritage Conservation Act, and they're also managed by the province. They're not managed by a municipality, whereas a heritage conservation area is managed by the municipality, and it's for us to review and consider. So, what we've done, rather than consider adding elements to the heritage conservation area respecting archaeological sites, we've included some amendments to the statement of significance that would recognize the indigenous past of the area and to acknowledge that there are archaeological sites, and they may be discovered in the future in this area, and that those are best sort of held within the purview of the province in terms of managing those. But we also acknowledge, and there's been some recommendation, I believe, coming out of at least one of our committees, that we maybe consider some policy around archaeological sites and process as a subsequent amendment or future amendment to that section of the community plan. So, it's best to sort of address that in a policy context, rather than within the HCA is sort of the bottom-line conclusion of that, if I may. The thing I'd noted is that we have worked with our advisory committees to get us to this point with the HCA. Numerous meetings held with each of the committees, there are, in your package, there are recommendations from the advisory committees respecting the HCA. And for each of those, there is a recommendation that council would consider approval of this new HCA for the, for the community. So, with that, I just sort of would like to note that the recommendation that council has before you is to consider first and second readings to the bylaw associated with this, set a public hearing date, and to direct staff to proceed with the formal consultation. So, with that, I'd go back to the chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And yeah, I'd just point out, as you did, just to reiterate, there is, we're meeting as a committee here, we don't make any decisions tonight. We will make a recommendation to council as to next steps. It is also being committee, an opportunity for anybody, members of the public to come forward, and we'll do that shortly to, if you have any comments, you can make them. There is a more formal community input portion of this as well, that the, which if this does move forward through first and second reading, will trigger a public hearing, and that's the place that we would more formally and officially recognize all members of the public as well and take correspondence at that point. It's a bit of a confusing double step for Republican, but you're welcome to come to both, either or neither of those two. At this point, I'll turn it over to members of this committee, to Mr. Anderson or Mr. McDonald from Heritage Works at this time, if there's any questions for clarifications. Counselor Green?
Through you, Mayor, and thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, a very comprehensive report. Just a couple of questions regarding the report, or maybe, on page three of eight, top paragraph, "The HCA does not prohibit future development in the area. It does not in itself prevent the demolition or construction of new buildings, and each property within the HCA retains the rights to which it is entitled under the zoning by law." But that does not preclude council from recommending a protection order, though, on any particular property if it was threatened by demolition. Would that be correct? Thank you.
Yeah, the reference in there is really that the HCA is not the tool that they would, you would use for that. So, just to, it's really just to clarify. And it's also to clarify or to make sure it's known that a heritage alteration permit under an HCA needs to consider the development rights that exist on a property under the zoning.
Thank you. On page six of eight, the paragraph that's just ahead of consultation under sections 475, 476 of the LGA, "Given the separation of archaeological resources in heritage conservation areas through legislation, the proposed heritage conservation area for the proposed, or sorry, for the Prospect neighborhood is not the appropriate tool for inclusion of archaeological policy." And I fully understand that based on your earlier explanations. Should council wish to incorporate additional archaeological policy within the OCP, however, this could be addressed through a separate process." Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Anderson, would you be able to comment on what that separate process might look like? Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Certainly, through the chair. What we would need initially is for council to direct staff to examine that and to come forward with, with policy recommendations regarding that. And the process would be basically to amend the official community plan, so you would bring forward that and come through a process, not unlike what we're commencing here, and that is consideration by committee and then council of readings of a bylaw and public hearing. So, similar process, not a similar process to sort of develop the policy changes that might be considered as part of that. That would be a much more expedited process.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Counselor Green. Other questions? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and sort of continuing on a similar vein relating to archaeological aspects. I understand that we have to bring some aspects forward in terms of changing our bylaws and adding to our own OCP. Until we do that, what is in place today? Is it provincial policy? Are there some laws or regulations? Is it a federal aspect? What would be controlling or in some ways regulating any actions moving forward today?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, the policy would be around just maybe clarifying or identifying the value and importance of archaeological sites in the community. The policy that we propose or bring forward in the community plan would not be speaking to the provincial process or having any direct impact on that process. It might just be providing a little bit more information on how it is that archaeological sites are important in the community and perhaps making that distinction about how they're managed within that, within that document. So, it wouldn't be a policy change that would change the way archaeological sites are reviewed or managed. That's not within the purview of the municipality.
Thank you. Counselor Zelka?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, appreciate that. And it sounds to me like the archaeological branch of the provincial government has a fair bit of leeway in terms of telling us, asking us, directing us, or our staff in terms of doing or not doing certain things. Is this true?
Mr. Anderson?
No, I just, just to clarify through the chair, the archaeological branch with the province has responsibility and manages the process. They do not direct the municipality. They, there's a role for the municipality, and that is to provide information and to ensure when issues are identified that people are directed, property owners are directed to the province to go through the process that they undertake. But we're not being directed specifically by the province, just to clarify.
Thank you.
That's helpful. If I may ask another question then. Thank you very much for the answer on that, much appreciated. I noticed in the statement of significance, we have designated properties noted, we have registered properties, and there's one that has a covenant on York Place, 1630 York Place. Was this just something that was done? If you could possibly explain maybe difference between that versus maybe a more formal process done on the others? Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, there is a covenant in place, and I believe it was done some time ago, and there is some acknowledgement of the values and the heritage value that that area represents. That was a separate process and is a separate process from a heritage conservation area. I'm not sure when it was put in place.
Thank you very much.
If I just make clarification, that is the covenant that exists on the subdivided property at the end of York Place. Is that the discussion piece?
Yes.
Okay. And just for, people probably, I think people up here notice, know that, but for clarification, that's one of the exemptions listed in the, in the process piece of the document, that they are exempt from the HAP process because they have their own approval process underneath a covenant with the municipality. Are there other questions? Counselor Braithwaite?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, to Mr. Anderson. On page five, you talk about the, and you did touch on this, about the heritage alteration permit approval process. So, right now, it has the final resolution, has to go to council, and you're suggesting that it stays that way for now. But further on in that paragraph, you say that you would also suggest that when council undertakes a review of the delegation by law, we could, it could be delegated to the Director of Building and Planning, but that's not to say, that's not included in this recommendation. That's just something that could happen in the future if council chose to go that way.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, through the chair. That paragraph was really added to acknowledge that we've had some discussion over the course of development of the HCA, but we wanted to provide some ideas around that, but it is not, as I mentioned, part of the OCP amendment that's before you.
Thank you.
Are there other questions at this time? Counselor Appleton?
Thank you, your worship, and through you to staff. I was just wondering if I could get clarification on the role of the actual conservation area guidelines, because I note in the draft bylaw 4620, I understand the amendments to the OCP language itself. The draft guidelines are attached to that bylaw as Schedule B to that bylaw. I don't see in the bylaw itself where there's a specific reference to how this, how that will be used, how that second attachment would be used. I'm just wondering, is it, is, will that set of guidelines, as it appears here in this, in this package, then be essentially become a schedule or an appendix to the OCP itself? How is that structured?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, through the chair. So, the guidelines, maybe I'll just, the guidelines are used when heritage alteration permit applications are reviewed. So, the guidelines are an integral part of the processes associated with this. The guidelines are also part of the plan by virtue of this amendment, so they become part of the official community plan as a document that is used, as I mentioned, for the review of HAPs. So, they're, they're, they form part of the plan as part of this amendment, and they're used to review heritage alteration permit applications. Is that?
Thank you. And that's, just a quick follow-up through you, your worship. In what's, I was just wondering then, was there an interest? I just realized that the guidelines in their current form contain information, contain supplementary information beyond that which is strictly necessary to evaluate a heritage alteration permit and preamble pieces and those kinds of things, which if adopted into the OCP could be considered as directing policy. So, I was just wondering at what, whether there was any need to focus the guideline piece specifically on the mechanism of evaluating guidelines and whether or not the preamble and contextual piece was necessary in that document.
Mr. Anderson?
Through the chair. It has caused some, some discussion, much discussion about process, unfortunately, but I will say that the guidelines are referred to, and those are the items that we would use for the HAP process, the executive summary, the preamble. It's not uncommon in guidelines to have sections of guidelines, introductory sections, that just provide some, some context, some explanation, and that's really how these would be viewed and how are typically reviewed for guidelines. So, it's the actual guidelines themselves that we would use, and we would use the guidelines that are appropriate to the type of activity or whether the property's on the schedule or not. activity or whether the property is on the schedule or not. So we'd be very, very specific about our use of the the guidelines, if I may.
Are you done?
Well, just maybe one quick comment that that would, that would be my concern is is that there is some, and I understand why that content is in there, but my concern would be that some of the the aspirational language and some of the contextual language, that it not be misinterpreted by being potentially adopted into the OCP as in and of itself policy direction from council. So depending on what that language looks like. I understand and I hear clearly from staff how, what the application is. I'm just sort of raising that flag as far as some of those, they, there, there is language in these guidelines which speaks more to, like you say, aspirational and and non regulatory language, for want of a better word.
Mr. Anderson?
Just to clarify, perhaps, the guidelines are not policy. They're not they're not part of the policy section of the community plan. So they are, they are guidelines, just as guidelines are there for development permit areas. And so I don't believe, because they're clearly stated as guidelines, there'd be confusion that they were containing policy. That's just a drafting convention. I guess I thought I would mention that.
Councilor Ne?
It's through you, Mayor, to staff. Just a quick question in the guideline document about the consultation under section four, seventy-five and seventy-six of the Local Government Act. And which refers to the duty to consult, and you've identified a number of stakeholders to consult, and I'm just wondering if you could give some rationale to why you've chosen who you've chosen to consult, because there are some that aren't, and what the nature of the consultation is anticipated to be.
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, so as part of when we conduct an OCP amendment, we are, through the legislation, required to undertake consultation, but we're also permitted to determine how that consultation is undertaken and to whom it's, it's sent. For staff, we basically look through the if you will, the list of agencies that might have an interest in in this, in this topic, and that's how we sort of, if you will, narrowed, narrowed this down to to include the the agencies that are represented in there. And what we do is we actually send a a formal referral letter and include the the amendment package and give a timeframe for for comments to be received, and that's considered prior to council giving any final adoption to to this document.
A follow up, if I may. I mean, is there any? We haven't identified adjacent municipalities. I'm just wondering the rationale. I don't really have a a reason to do that, but I'm just wondering why that was done and this was not done and school districts were included in the list.
Mr. Anderson?
So through the chair, the latter comment, school districts are a required agency for us to circulate within. They also have properties and may have interest within the municipality. Adjacent municipalities do not have properties and and direct interest in something of this nature, so we, we would not do a formal consultation on this.
Thank you. Are there questions at this time? I don't see any. So at this point, we'll, we'll, we can invite members of the public to come forward and address council. It's a fairly open forum of discussion, and I just, I also want to just acknowledge the fact that this has been a process now of three years and counting. And one of the things that we, I think we set out on this about in at various stages, there's been expectations, I think, from very different members of council and staff, a different understanding of what the timelines were expected to be. We all just sort of imagined them. So one of the things that's that we've taken out of this whole process is, A, really, number one, we're now, you'll start noticing in all of our projects of this nature, of any nature, timelines, projected timelines available, so that the public is aware and council are aware and staff are all on the same page in terms of what the expectations of when the deliverables are coming. Because I think all of us were expecting this at various times. And I do, I think my expectation, at least, I will say, was a little unrealistic in this one. I thought it would be a month or two after we completed the guidelines piece, and it would be back here, but I do recognize that other like heritage conservation areas, like the Queens Park in New West, a coverage of four years plus a couple of years of implementation time, so it's not unusual for it to take some time. I just I think that's one of the great lessons learned out of this process. But please, anybody who wishes to come forward to address council may or committee may do so. And really, any topic related to this, please come forward. If you don't mind, if everybody comes forward and just write your name, so we have the correct spelling for the minutes. Just state your name and municipality of residence, and then you're, you're welcome to address any pieces.
My name is Irene Cocaine, and I am, yes, an Oak Bay resident. So I actually was going to talk to you a little bit about that long, long, long process that has gone on with this. And one of the things that I've noticed is that within that timeframe, there have been changes, and the changes are paramount. And we need to pay a lot of attention to them. Now, over here, we have Councilor Patterson, who's been to a heritage meeting in Nanaimo and told me that they now are understanding that they must allow heritage homes to change their windows, because those windows are just bleeding heat into the environment. Okay, so with the new climate emergency plan that's happening, and certainly I was at the Saturday presentation here. So, so we need to really have a good think about how that works. And perhaps now, this is and it's going to be really hard. I also listened to your your meeting to do with council priorities. And you spoke of Oak Bay having seventy percent of the homes heat their homes with fossil fuels in Oak Bay. You mentioned that. So in Oak Bay, our old and heritage homes are in dire need of energy retrofits. And each home in the proposed Prospect Heritage Conservation Area needs to be energy evaluated and to have energy retrofits undertaken and completed, I believe, before this should be sanctified and endorsed as valuable, because these homes will move into the future. Now, this is an opportunity to really wrestle with this concept of heritage, of climate change, of what is happening in in the future. So that's pretty well my hammer.
Thank you, Ms. Cocaine. That's most appreciated. Mr. Anderson, I note where there is no there's no prevention of of energy retrofits and the like in the HCA guidelines, but is there maybe you can just talk to a little bit about what the if there's any any perceived impact from staff's perspective on the wording of the guidelines at this in terms of preventing or enabling such energy retrofits in future?
I know through this process that, and particularly if I can recall, it was at the Advisory Planning Commission, that there was a recommendation to include reference to building resilience document as part of the guidelines to ensure that we were acknowledging the need to pay attention to I guess, energy efficiency, for example, in this. So I think, and partly the addition of that and in part the discussion that's surrounded that, we we acknowledge that that there is a need to to attend to modifications that that might, for example, require changes in in windows, but we're all sort of looking at whether or not the proposed change is in keeping with the intent of the HCA and the guidelines. So the the guidelines' real focus is, is on those elements, but not on the particular, I guess, functions associated with with building renovations or restorations. I don't know if Mr. McDonald has anything more or not on that, but that's my comments, Chair.
Mr. McDonald, you don't have to speak if you don't want to. Welcome, by the way. Welcome, Mr. McDonald. Yeah, Gordon McDonald is one of the one of the principals of Heritage Works. We also have another member in the audience as well, so is intimately involved in the in the development of the guidelines in the first place with the working group. Welcome, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Just, just to add to to Mr. Anderson's comment there, we did receive some really valuable feedback in during the the process of consulting with the committees, and the most recent version of the guidelines carries some language that came directly from those meetings, and the intention was was twofold. One, to clarify that there's there's absolutely nothing in the guidelines which should inhibit or prevent thoughtful energy upgrading and moves towards sustainability in managing heritage resources. And then, secondly, to steer both owners and and developers or architects consulting with owners towards the current gold standard for for how to do that. And so that, so those are late additions to the document specifically to address that concern and reassure reassure everyone that there's, there really isn't any deal breaker in these guidelines if they're, if they are applied thoughtfully.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Welcome next, anybody else who wishes to come forward? Yeah, why don't we let people come through and then, okay, you can come back if you wish.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jill Pollard, and I live at fifteen eighty Beach Drive within the proposed Heritage Conservation Area. While my husband and I live in one of the newer homes in the neighborhood, we have requested to be on the schedule of properties, which includes our house, stone walls and pillars, supporting the goal of long-term protection and management of this historic area. Next door to our property is fifteen fifty-eight Beach Drive, which my husband's family owned for some time, the James and James-designed Morris House built in nineteen twelve. I have been actively involved in this important and wonderful neighborhood initiative since the beginning, the summer of twenty sixteen. Since then, we have hosted and participated in many neighborhood gatherings and have attended many municipal meetings. I am pleased, Mayor and Council, to see this recommendation before you tonight, and I look forward to the conversations in the coming weeks and the public hearing on February twenty-fourth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bob Wallace. I live at fifteen fifteen eighty for Prospect Place, therefore I am also inside the conservation, proposed conservation area. My, my comments on this could take three hours. And, but I understand that goes a little beyond, so I've decided to make it in three minutes. So so my first question is, is the, is the HCA good for Oak Bay? Yes, it is. Very simply put, in my opinion, by definition, a heritage area is something that is treasured throughout the world in every place that you go, and we don't have one. So why don't we have one? We have the makings of one, and we have the ability to make that happen. So all it needs to do is pass. We have taken history in school, and it has always been something that's been interesting. And this is creating history for Victoria, Oak Bay, and the whole island. Because having a heritage conservation area is a plus. And this would be the first on the island. This puts, now, let's take, so with that, with what steps are required to create this creature? People have cooperated, debated, and had worked very hard to get this to where it is. I would like to thank and congratulate the Oak Bay staff, the council, and with the commissions who have provided us with ideas, information, and stewardship. Included as well are all of my fellow neighbors who have worked industriously hard to make sure we are here tonight. Finally, I like to say this is an amorphic piece of legislation. By this, I mean, we are allowing future dwellers, we must allow future dwellers, councillors, mayors, and staff to diligently monitor the future and make changes to suit their future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. I just, two quick, one clarification, okay, you have a seat, but a clarification and a question. First, HCA considered in Oak Bay, not the first on the island. And, but a question to staff may be out of that, the 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 flexibility of adding and removing properties from the schedule. That process is not necessarily laid out in this. What is the require, is it require a similar OCP-type level of change, or what is required to make those changes in future?
Yeah, it's forming part of the OCP as part of this amendment bylaw. The schedule would need an amendment process for changes, for additions, to be, or deletions. It's not an uncommon practice to do so.
So probably at best an annual or something like that process that we might consider, but not on a, on a regular basis for application. That's good to know. Thank you. Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sharman Minas, and I live in the Prospect Proposed Prospect Heritage Conservation Area.
Welcome, Ms. Minas.
I'm very pleased we are now at this stage of implementing the Prospect, Oak Bay's first HCA. I'm also pleased that statements about the indigenous history of the area are now included in the Statement of Significance and the Director of Building and Planning's report. The indigenous history of the Prospect Heritage Conservation Area is one of its many character-defining assets, albeit an intangible one. However, as actual discoveries of artifacts are uncovered within this area, they then turn into tangible assets. I feel that they must be protected in a proactive rather than a reactive way. As you know, last summer, an excavating company digging on a lot within the HCA uncovered an indigenous shell midden. It went unreported until residents contacted the archaeology department. During that unreported time of approximately two weeks, a blasting company drilled pilot holes for charges in the surrounding rocks. The day after residents reported to the archaeology branch, which was the same day before blasting was supposed to commence, the archaeology branch visited and shut everything down. And later on, an archaeological assessment was done. That was a very close call. The building bylaws in Oak Bay currently state that only development applications may or might require an archaeological assessment to be done before a building permit is granted. I would like to see a bylaw in our HCA that states that if there is any excavation on any lot within the Prospect HCA, an archaeological assessment must be completed first before a building permit is issued. This would apply to developers and individual homeowners. The laws governing these assessments may be provincial, but I hope that the municipality can see the sense of working together proactively to prevent the destruction of such sites within the HCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Minas. I'm just maybe throw that to staff if I, if I might, just to deal with these as we go along. Is there a I mean, these are governed in any building permit process, as I understand it. Is there any value of adding that particular language into an, into an HCA document? This has been talked about a fair bit at the Heritage Commission pieces as well.
Yeah, I think as staff, through the chair, as staff advised earlier, it's, it's, the HCA is not the place to to put that kind of, kind of direction. Again, it's it's the purview of the province and the archaeological branch, and our process is to identify when there's an activity that's is to identify when there's an activity that's adjacent to an archaeological site, then we provide that information and direction to the applicants to work with the province. That's the process that I believe municipalities use respecting archaeological work.
Thank you. I guess I would note as well, of course, those archaeological sites are in many places in Oak Bay, not just in the Heritage Conservation Area boundaries. Counselor Green?
Through you, Mayor, to Mr. Anderson. Are there penalties associated with not reporting archaeological findings on a property by the owner?
Not, Mr. Anderson, do you know?
My understanding is there can be through our archaeological expert adjacent, but I'm not aware of what they are.
Thank you.
All right. Welcome, sir.
My name's Robert Long. I live in the proposed HC area, and I was a member of the working group. Before that, for over 20 years, I lived in and worked with an HCA on Vancouver's North Shore. I support the proposed amendments to the OCP. Listing the HCA objectives makes their purpose clear for all to see. Assuming it happens, adoption will be an indication that Oak Bay's first HCA has come alive. I also support two proposed procedures for managing the HCA. First, the Director of Planning, and I hope I have this correct, recommends that all properties, scheduled and unscheduled, to be reviewed by the Heritage Commission. Now, the first procedure, that's the first procedure, and this is important. It may sound odd, but the future HCA depends more on the unscheduled than the scheduled properties. Scheduled properties are pretty safe. Existing rules, and lots of people keeping an eye on them, little chance of them being significantly changed. On the other hand, a concrete box on an unscheduled property could, would, do permanent damage to the entire area. It is the unscheduled which are most in need of heritage experience and architect's knowledge. We don't want to end up with an HCP, a Heritage Conservation Patchwork, nor do we want to see these fine old heritage buildings looking miserable because of their new surroundings. A second important procedure, the Heritage Commission recommends that council make the final decision on each HAP. If adopted, this will make sure that the process is transparent, and that's obviously very important. That's two important procedures, but more are needed. I won't go into them now. In closing, I'm both encouraged and apprehensive. Encouraged because the basics for a good HCA are ready for council, apprehensive because more good procedures are needed. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Long, and thank you for your service on the working group.
Thank you.
Bronwyn Taylor, a resident of Oak Bay. The Heritage Commission fully supports the prospective Heritage Conservation Area for the Prospect, and our wish to follow up on what Mr. Long said is that we wish to be actively engaged and involved in the procedures developed for any implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. And we did get the minutes, draft minutes in our package to capture that as well. Never heard to come forward and say it again, so that's great.
It's been a long time coming, hasn't it? But we're getting there.
It's like driving in snow. You've got to take it nice and easy and, you know, carefully.
That's good. I do like nice and easy. Mayor and Council, my name is Ken Grant, and I live in the proposed HCA. My thanks to council and staff for such faithful support of this grassroots initiative. The OCP affords our community the opportunity to establish heritage conservation areas, as we all know, and I'm grateful to see this one moving forward. I support Bruce Anderson's report, including the recommendations to council. However, I'm just a bit concerned about how HAPS will be handled in the HCA, and I've just got a few different things to say than what others have said, but some might sound a little familiar. I'm more really concerned about scheduled property, well, I'm not concerned about scheduled properties, like Robert said, they will be well protected. But the new builds and changes to non-scheduled properties, it's how they are overseen, will make or break an HCA. A sample application review process flow chart appears on page six of the HCA guidelines, which I'm sure you've all seen. It shows staff having the last word on HAPS for non-scheduled homes plus new builds. My feeling is that the HAPS applications for this HCA should be reviewed by the Heritage Commission and council, as well as staff. As you know, the Heritage Commission's mandate is to, quote, "advise council on any matter related to the heritage significance of any building, structure, or landscape feature within the municipality of Oak Bay," end quote. And currently, all HAPS, as you said earlier, go through council for approval. Why change a good thing? How many HAP applications might need processing per year? I did some research. Colonna's much larger HCA has 320 homes, houses that it processes, and so in one year it processes about 16 HAPS a year. Our much smaller HCA contains only 50 houses, so proportionally, you may expect to receive 2.5 applications per year. Not very many, maybe. On page five of Bruce Anderson's report under HCA implementation, it is suggested that HAP approvals could be delegated to the Director of Building and Planning. People come and go. What happens in 15, 20 years if Oak Bay gets a Director of Building and Planning who's not so favorable to heritage? The implementation process for HCAs is very important to an HCA's success. Please consider including the Heritage Commission, and of course, yourselves, in the review process of every HAP application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. We are not, of course, deciding on the process tonight, but this is all helpful feedback that'll guide us in the future, so thank you for that.
I live in the proposed HCA in a designated heritage house and have served on the HCA Working Group. It's exciting to be at this point in the process of creating Oak Bay's first Heritage Conservation Area, an initiative the whole community can be proud of. I wish to support the Director of Building and Planning's report to council, but I, like many other neighbors here tonight, urge council to include the Heritage Commission and council in the review and approval process of all heritage alteration permits. The principle of delegation, in this case, is not appropriate. Counselors ran for election on a platform of responsible oversight, transparency, and accountability. Here's a good opportunity to fulfill that campaign promise. Regarding the proposed bylaw, I have a couple minor suggestions for clarification related to this section titled exemptions, point number five, which I'll send you by email. Otherwise, I am pleased and grateful for the good work that's been done so far by staff, council, and the community to bring this project to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Hi, my name is David Harris. I live in York Place, part of the proposed conservation area. I'd just like to say thank you to the council and to staff and to all the people that put in lots of hours of work. Our house isn't a heritage house, but we've put it on the schedule because we think it's important that as many houses as possible in the area are on the schedule. And I just, I'm just glad we're at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And I'll just take this moment to actually express my appreciation to Ms. McDonald, Mr. Anderson, and the rest of staff, and the various committees and commissions that gave input, because the working group struggled with what, with adding anything beyond the specific heritage-identified assets that were in the Statement of Significance, and the idea of the context properties and a way of including them was actually an interesting portion of the, and way of getting to that. So I did appreciate that, that effort made in there. Welcome, sir.
My name is Robert Craig. I live in the Prospect area. As a neophyte on heritage, I thought in preparation for the meeting I would download the agenda and attachments, so I hit the print button. A hundred, 110 pages later, I had a bit of, you know, confusion. My first impulse thought was to go to the pub and have a beer. And then as I thought about it, I thought, well, this is not such a bad idea, but I'd go there to propose a toast. And the toast would be to raise a glass in appreciation and gratitude to the mayor, council, staff, and all the volunteers who've worked so hard to bring us to this stage. So thank you all very much. Now, let me, over the past three years, I've been frustrated by a process which was bringing, which was bringing forward the HCA at the speed of turtle Mach II. And when one realizes the load that the turtle was carrying, one has to be more understanding and empathetic. Now, I don't know if everyone knows this, but turtles usually lay their eggs in the spring after a long haul up the beach. And my hope is that we'll have a successful hatching of the HCA this spring. Now, for the, my fellow neighbors in the HCA who may be remiss about being, it may not be for the HCA, I've, I don't have a heritage, I don't live in a heritage home, but I have an old 1910-ish utilities building in the back. And I've done a lot of research for me on the upside and the downside of living in this heritage. And from what I can see in analyzing the documents cross-country and that, there's a lot more upside than downside. And there's also, it's also would be protecting very much the environment in which we live every day. So to conclude my remarks, I think we've learned a lot in this long, ongoing process. And if I can be so bold as to suggest two and a half things. One is maybe a little more transparency, and I understand that there are times when it's difficult to be blasting, no blasting, what's a midden, where it's at, all this kind of stuff. And my second point under this heading is leadership, not just being the adults in the room, which, by the way, I don't think would be a good campaign ad because of what it refers about the others. And the third is courageous leadership. Now, as I came in this evening, I sort of, a motto came to mind. I looked at those two giant acorns on the lawn, and I thought to myself, Oak Bay's got a pair. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. We have a vaudeville review in our committee of the whole meetings here coming up.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm Michael Prince. I'm an Oak Basinian who lives in 1525 Prospect Place within the proposed HCA. A lot of my neighbors covered a lot of things I wanted to talk about, so I want to, let me just say a few broad themes. This HCA represents a number of things. One, the sustained dedication of local residents since the summer of 2016, productive collaboration with staff and consultants like Gord, whose pleasure to work with, and other municipal bodies, the commissions, the design panels, the planning commission. I think we really saw some value added that's been raised, so just literally in the last couple of months on a report that had exhaustive work on it the year before, shows that there are still opportunities for continued learning and reflection on the document. And so I think between now and the public hearing on the 24th, there will continue to be some further opportunities, particularly for you. This is coming back to you. You have busy agendas, you've got a lot on your plate. To some of us, this is the center of our universe. To you, it's one of the planets revolving around your solar system, so, but the next four weeks or five weeks hopefully will be a chance for you to focus a little bit more and to dig into it and to raise good questions, and I'm getting a sense already to any of that. It's also an exciting policy innovation for this municipality and for our official community plan, and I think Mr. Anderson's spoken to that quite well tonight. It's also a concrete realization of a council strategic priority, where the previous council took a chance on this idea and committed $45,000 to help enable a process to go forward on a working group process and to have a Statement of Significance developed for an area rather than just a property or a house, so that's very exciting. And I think it's also, Mr. Anderson referred to this as HCA1, and I like the ring of that. It's got a nice tone and hopeful sense that this could be a potential inspiration to other neighbors and neighborhoods within Oak Bay who may be interested in some long-term protection of a street or an area or another extensive neighborhood that we feel we have with what we call the Prospect. The timelines have been mentioned tonight, and many of us have been at this long enough that it feels that we could personally qualify for a heritage designation. But I was speaking to a retired heritage planner from Victoria the other day, and he said, Michael, there's wisdom in these things taking time, because it lets people kind of get used to the idea, particularly if it's an innovation. So I took that as a silver lining in the timeline, but I also, quite honestly, Counselor Appleton, you raised a really good question about the preamble to the guideline document, those first several pages. And what I heard you basically asking, the way I heard it was, what's the legal effect or legal significance of that text? My modest understanding of case law in this area and consulting with a municipal law specialist is that the language we particularly need to pay attention to is in the OCP bylaw amendment, particularly under the section, the justification, and the objectives, which are mandated by law to be part of the bylaw. Given that the Statement of Significance itself will not be part of the bylaw, a question that you should ask yourselves, and I've posed this to myself and my neighbors, is, are we missing anything out of the Statement of Significance that needs to be in the justification? Now, I appreciate the justification should be briefer, but have we either admitted entirely, which is perhaps unlikely, but maybe more nuanced, is there some character-defining elements or features of this special area that we've given too brief a mention of in the justification, so that if there was in the future any kind of legal cases or challenges, that a judge would look to the justification and to the objectives to get the intention of council and what you were meaning to achieve by establishing this HCA? So the language in the justification section and the four objectives that we have now, we started with three, I think, and we came to four. Other municipalities, if you care to look at their HCA objectives in their bylaws, there's others around things like raising public awareness, education, those sorts of things. But one I would raise to you, and it might be going too far, and I acknowledge that up, is whether a fifth objective would be that, that one of the purposes of this HCA is to incorporate the in-house expertise you have in your Heritage Commission and possibly your advisory design panel. I'll leave the wording to you, but the concept is that one of the purposes of the HCA is to ensure community-based heritage expertise and knowledge plays a central role in the, in this application process reviews. That really, to me, is a democratic principle. That really, to me, is a democratic principle. It's not so much about the mechanics of heritage per se, but it's an expression of that community engagement, which has been a long practice of municipality, is acknowledged. So that's food for thought. Others have talked tonight about the need for transparency and so forth. I won't go over that. I would just maybe say I support, obviously, the recommendation. I think it's a well-written report that Mr. Anderson's put forward. It clearly sets out the next steps for you to consider during the formal referral to the key stakeholders, including local First Nations, a public hearing in a month, which is required by law in any case, and ultimately your consideration and ultimately your decision. And I think you've heard tonight from some of my neighbors. There's many more that will come to the public hearing. We know there will be some dissent and some honest criticism, and that's fair, and that's all part of the process. That's been part of our experience over the last four years. But we want to make sure that with our own continued engagement, and we'll probably reach out to each of you over the next coming week, so be forewarned or be prepared. Some of you, we recall, we reached out to you in this August 2016 to begin conversations. In a way, we're coming full circle with some of you and others who've joined council more recently. But we have been encouraged by your support, and we've been encouraged by your continued interest, and I look forward to this next month or so. And I'm just still thinking about the turtle eggs being laid, so that's... But just finally, there's an old saying that the devil is in the details. And I know we're here to talk about the bylaw, not the details of the implementation and process, but I always also like to think that not only is the devil in the details, but the angelic features of public policy also reside or can reside in the details. It's there where the community values, public interest, and democratic aspirations can dwell and thrive if we get the details right. And so you've heard about those tonight: transparency, political accountability, leadership by council, and continuing the practice we have of community-based heritage expertise playing an ongoing role in the approval, review, or recommendations on all HAPs. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. And I just encourage everybody who wants to inform council. We tend to, at this table, get all of our information at the same time as the public. And it's worth writing letters to council. They form part of the public record. It helps inform the public as well as council. And generally, we consider the information that comes to us through formal channels in deliberations of things. So it's always worthwhile to just take the time to do that and/or to come out to these meetings, speak to us on a public forum as well, because this is where we take that information in. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to address council at this time? Ms. Cockeen, you had... You suggested you wanted to come back again. Do you want to come back to the table? Nope, you have to come... Unfortunately, you have to come forward to the microphone. Well, you have to understand, there are people watching at home, and they cannot hear if something's said without the microphone on, so...
So in the late 1990s, my home was forced designated heritage. One of the first things I wanted to do was to find out what was involved with the rules and regulations. As you can understand, I was really miffed that none of the windows could be touched ever. Now, there's a lot of glass in my house, and it's single-pane glass. And it's equal to living in a home that has cardboard for your windows. And you see, I really think that it's essential that you look at, maybe even just delay this. It's been delayed, and everybody's very excited and all that. But the real force of what's happening with the future is climate change, not heritage. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And as the next speaker comes up, I will... If there is interest in changing windows on a designated house, it is possible. Certainly, there are storm windows and other things that you can do. But we're not for the table of discussion here tonight. I just want to... We're dealing with the bylaw that's in front of us here for now, so we'll just focus on that. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Pat Wilson, and I live in South Oak Bay, and I ardently support this HCA, and I'm thrilled that we are here now. And I do appreciate the efforts, and I thought Bruce and Deborah did a phenomenal explanation at our commission meeting of the pros and cons and the ins and outs and everything. So anyway, I'm really thrilled on that. And if I could only just say, as a general principle, that the Heritage Commission operates under, it is a pragmatic view of what needs to be done to the house. Things are not fixed in stone. We look at what makes the house viable over the long term. Heritage can only be represented by a house if it's viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward to address council at this time? I'm not seeing anybody else come forward. I'll... Last chance? Anybody? Okay. We'll bring it back to this table. Counselor Green?
Thank you. I just have a question for Mr. Anderson through you. Mr. Anderson, do we have... I know we're here to talk about the bylaw, but do we have an implementation timeline in mind? And I know that we're loath to make promises that we may not be able to keep, but do we have sort of a timeframe for implementation? Should the HCA be approved? Thank you.
Maybe I should just make this comment through the chair that with the adoption of this amendment, the HCA will be in place and HAPs will be reviewed in accordance with the guidelines that are part of this process. So the implementation actually occurs once this HCA is put in place. I think you might have... I'm sure you're also referring to when we would look at modifying procedures that we have for our HAP. And I can only tell you that we would certainly want to go through our process of looking at working with our commissions first before we would... And as part of that, we may be looking at whether or not we should consider any changes to the process we have now, which, as I mentioned, is that Heritage Commission does review these HAPs when they come forward, and council does approve them.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Breatwait and then Counselor Zelka, and if I don't mind, I'm just going to make a comment on that as well, because I think it's important that that sample was there, and it was the option of changing that was really in recognition, frankly, of another one of the heritage-designated houses in that area that had broken tiles that went through a HAP process, and that was seen by both the owner and by most people in the neighborhood as being... It sort of flagged heritage as a negative thing, that delayed a very reasonable work. And so there was contemplation of how do we make sure that implementation of this process does not create these situations that reasonable and small jobs don't get caught up in the bureaucracy of it all. So that's... You just brought some context of why some of those thought processes went in there, but I I take Mr. Anderson's point very clearly, that we'll we'll have to take what's there currently, which is that we'll follow that process and we'll consider those changes as we go forward. Counselor Breatwait?
Thank you. And through you, Chair, I'm wanting to talk about the HAPs as well, because we heard a number of people talk about unscheduled properties. And so perhaps through you, Chair, we can ask Mr. Anderson, how hard would it be to have unscheduled properties or builds reviewed by the Heritage Commission and council?
Mr. Anderson?
So, of course, through the chair, how hard would it be always makes me think that I need to give an answer that's acknowledging that it's hard. So the process as it's entailed or outlined right now would basically be the same. We would apply guidelines, the guidelines that are there for the non-scheduled, I believe that's what you were asking about. So a different set of guidelines would apply. But in terms of the process, there would be a HAP. And that current process, as I mentioned, would be Heritage Commission, staff, council approval.
So it's still the purview of council to approve something like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then I think I saw that Mr. McDonald wanted to say something as well. Is that right, Mr. McDonald? So I don't know if you want to go to him. He tried to put his hand up.
I guess I have to now. I was trying to avoid that. See, Mr. McDonald?
Well, thank you. I'll take it. Well, this is very exciting to be at this stage of the game, I've got to say. It's been a long run, and I've I've learned a lot as part of that process personally. And I've also had a chance to to meet and work alongside some really excellent people, some of which you've heard speak this evening. I'd like to offer an observation for your consideration, and that's from my perspective, not as a member of the working group, but in my other role as the president of Heritage BC, which is a provincial organization that is very interested in the conservation of our built environment. And that observation is, having witnessed a number of these sorts of processes across the province and looked at the supporting information that enables them, this is a really solid package that's been presented to you by Mr. Anderson. And I'd just like to emphasize the quality of the of the package that you've got, because it's a reflection of the expertise that you have available to you and your staff. Ms. Jensen and Mr. Anderson bring something to Oak Bay, which not a lot of municipalities have. And they won't tell you that, but I think it's appropriate to mention. So from a provincial perspective, this is a coherent and a compelling proposal for a heritage conservation area. It stacks up alongside its its brothers and sisters, province-wide, and also internationally.
Thank you. Is that... Counselor Breatwait? Counselor Zelka?
Thank you very much, Chair, and thank you for these wonderful comments. I much appreciate it. I also have a concern similar to some of my other council colleagues of the unscheduled properties. I do note in the Prospect Heritage Conservation Area Guidelines that there is a sample process where some of them end in council approval and some of them don't. Non-scheduled properties and new building on the sample review process provided for information only don't seem to end in council approval. I wanted to ask, in particular, when and how will the process be finalized? For the application review process, please, in particular for non-scheduled properties and new buildings?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, through you, Chair. As I mentioned, the process we currently have in place for review of HAPs is the process that we would use for the review of any HAPs in the HCA once the HCA is adopted. So if we're looking at modifications to the process, we would undertake a review and have to have consideration of that by the parties involved. And so it's not... I guess that's why, at the outset, I think I mentioned that we're we're not looking at changes to the process specifically as part of what's before council at this time. We're looking at introducing a new HCA to the area that would require heritage alteration permits that would use the application process that we have in place currently for those.
Excellent. If I can continue. If I remember correctly, the process to date basically sees that all of these HAPs come directly, or sorry, come through the process and then come to council. I don't believe there's a case where it doesn't come to council. Is this true?
They currently go to Heritage Commission and then to council?
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm that. Another question is... Of course, the reason I say that is that I agree. It is important to ensure we have community-based heritage expertise and knowledge and that it be used. I have another question here. Where did it go? Oh, yes. I was very pleased to see this referred to as HCA number one. I do note in the staff report, at the bottom of page one, it talks about how these conservation areas, plural, is also reflected in the Oak Bay Heritage Plan. I'm already eager to see HCA number two come forward. I guess I'm a sucker for abuse as a... So I just wanted to know how much of this process might be reused now that we have this expertise in house?
Mr. Anderson? 68%? 69%?
Yeah, no, I mean... You know, obviously, inception, establishment of a new tool in a community takes some work and some time, as was mentioned, for people to get used to the idea. But the components of preparation of an HCA are really not that different in terms of the information you need to gather. You know, preparing that first key document, that statement of significance that sort of identifies, you know, the value there and basically speaks to whether there's value in considering an HCA. And then off we go with the remainder of the process for this. So, I mean, I think it would be a shorter timeframe for another HCA. I don't think we necessarily have to have the full working group process to get us familiar and to the point where we are at today. So there's absolutely some value in having this current proposed HCA under our belts and knowing all of the components and on the values that we're hearing as we go through approval of this become important to inform, I guess, a subsequent consideration for another HCA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Zelka? Are you done? All right, thank you. Any other comments, people, questions? Counselor Green?
Just, this first came forward, if I may make some comments, when I was the new chair of the Heritage Commission. And I remember how excited we were. And while it has been a long process, it is also a gratifying outcome. And I'm really grateful to the community, to the Heritage Commission, to staff, to all the volunteers that were involved, and also, more recently, to our advisory design panel for their comments, to the advisory planning commission for their comments, and of course, the Heritage Commission. But what we have developed here now is, I think, a precedent for more HCAs. And thank you, Mr. Anderson, for making the comment about HCA 1. I think it is an inspiration for other neighborhoods to consider. And what we also have now, we have developed, and thank you, Mr. McDonald, for acknowledging that, we have developed a body of knowledge that we did not previously have. And that body of knowledge now will inform work going forward. And I would agree that it may be less painful and arduous in the future if we have an HCA 2 and 3 and 4 and so on. So I'm just really grateful that this did come to fruition. And also, I would like to thank council, because it was the previous council who began the process and this council who will conclude it. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Green. And we're not at conclusion yet. We are still going through a period of process of public hearings and first, second readings and things. So I just want to make sure that we're not getting too far ahead of ourselves at this point. We're going to make a recommendation.
So I would like to make that recommendation, if I may.
Yeah, I'll take a motion at this point, if you wish, and we can talk to that.
I will move that it be recommended to council to consider giving first and second readings to bylaw 4620.003 to establish the Prospect Heritage Conservation Area as supported by the statement of significance developed for the Prospect neighborhood. That council consider setting a public hearing on bylaw number 4620.003 to be held at the Oak Bay Municipal Hall on February 24, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers, and notice be given in accordance with the Local Government Act. And further, that council direct staff to proceed with formal referral consultative steps as outlined in this report dated February 14, 2020.
Is there a second, or?
Second.
Moving seconded. Just for my clarification with this recommendation to council for first and second reading, it's expected that first and second reading would happen at the next council meeting. Is that the next week? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so motions on the table. The comments may continue. Counselor Appleton, you wish to add something? Okay. Counselor Patterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's been really interesting listening to this discussion. I feel like it's almost deja vu. I've been sitting in meetings for the last few days and weeks on this. And it is really interesting to hear the same questions coming out and the shared understanding. I just would like to, as liaison to the Heritage Commission, in addition to thanking the staff and the consultants, the working group on this, certainly the community for their efforts in this, I really wanted to recognize also the hard work by Oak Bay's Heritage Commission. We are very, very fortunate to have them. The quick turnaround and pulling together the statements of significance to to help move this forward, because I really want... move this forward, because I really wanted to get this process going. And as you will notice in the minutes that are attached to this recommendation, the minutes of the Heritage Commission's last meeting are in draft form because there wasn't enough, we only had the meeting on, on, just before, yeah, on Friday, just before this. And, and I really commend the diligence in the commission members and in the district staff in truly a very in-depth meeting to really hammer out fine details and understanding around the documents presented. It was clearly a, a really well-rounded collaborative effort, and so I, I feel as the liaison to the Heritage Commission, I just want to point out what an asset they really are and that working together with staff, we can accomplish great things for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Is there any other? Time's up, that's right. Not quite that hardcore in this. Any other discussion at this point? If not, seeing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed, so we'll go to council for first and second reading next week and then follow that process as identified. Thank you, everyone. And is there any other? I just need a motion to adjourn at this point.
Move adjournment.
Moved and?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. Thank you very much, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight.